So with that introduction being said, I'd like to welcome Apostle Tom. You have the comms and take it wherever you want to go, sir, and I'll be in the back.
That's great. Praise God. It's good to be with you. I know I spoke here last year and introduced myself with a Scottish accent. Hope you remember that. Yeah, I said that God speaks to me in a Scottish accent. So, you know, we're going to get straight into this. There's just so much stuff that I could, I could cover here. But just a, a brief background for you. Scottish born, ended up in South Africa. And I became the music director in a church that just exploded called Rema, the Rema Church. I joined the church when it was probably about sixty people there and was there up until about fifteen thousand and just saw an incredible move of God. So I, I was leading worship during that time. And just, just happy, you know, I gave up my business. I was a businessman and gave that up. The senior pastor offered me a job and it was ridiculous. I was earning equivalent to seven thousand a month. And he says, I'll give you a job for sixteen hundred and I said seventeen hundred and I said, I'll take it. And so we took, I took the job. I gave my business away, which was a mistake because in those days it was like, you've got to trust God. Just give your business away and, and trust God. But if I had to start all over again, I would never do it that way. But we did it that way and, and God just blessed it. And so we saw remarkable move of God there. It's just incredible. It was God's time for a whole lot of things to, to happen at once, you know? God knew what was going to happen up the road in terms of the history of South Africa. And, and so, you know, there was a great outpouring of faith, especially faith. And praise and worship, and I didn't know any of this stuff at the time, but praise and worship was, was a major part of that, that move there. It was just incredible. But during, during that time when there was so much success in the church in terms of the church growing, I remember at one time we had a small window where we had, because I used to keep the figures. There was a small window which was about four or six months where, where we're getting four hundred people added to the church every month. Not visiting, but actually added to the church. So it was just a phenomenal move of God. You know, and you, you would think in that, you know, that, that anything is possible and in, in that environment, everything is possible. It was so easy that you just think, wow, that, you know, that it's incredible because it's, it's a place, and I believe we'll see it again, where, where you, you know, we've often dreamed about this. We've often talked about this kind of stuff revival. And, and a move of God is way beyond, you know, what you can imagine. But when God actually takes a center stage and, and things just happen and it's, it's almost like you're just there as a spectator. You're doing your stuff, obviously, but it's just when God steps in. And I believe that's going to happen again. So I was, I was in the middle of all of that and it was my day off and I had a, I was at home and, you know, I wasn't looking for anything. And I had, I did have an encounter with God for about forty minutes. And during that forty minutes, the Lord said to me, the worship that you give, there's more that I'm looking for in the end times. He started giving me a picture of what worship would look like in the end times. I may share some of that stuff with you today. But I was blown away by this for about forty minutes. And I went to my wife Barbara and I said, I just said something crazy happened to me. God just came into the room and, and God just showed me the role that worship would play in the end times. The role that worship would play in the end times. And, and I said, He wants me to start a school and teach people worship, but as a, as a way of life. Now, this was in nineteen eighty, when was it? About nineteen eighty-four, eighty-three, eighty-four. And that was foreign terminology to me at, at that time. Because at that time, Ray was sending me overseas and he says, go check out the worship in America. And I would go to these worship, big worship conferences in America. And I would come back and he would say, how are we doing here in South Africa? And I'd say, we're, we're doing great, man, because a lot of the stuff they're doing is still, it's almost, and as I said, you know, with it being prideful, but it's old school. You know, it's just, there's not a freshness in it. And they're still stuck in the tabernacle of David concepts without translating that into New Testament. And that's what I've written a lot on. But, and you know, so, so it was, it was like, wow. I felt we were on the cutting edge of what God was doing actually in the realm of local church and worship. And there was other churches that was moving. Theo was moving a little bit like that as well. But, but it was, it was, the thing that God was saying was that, that the role that worship will play will be so incredible. And I'm going to go through this fast. It'll all be centered, everything that we're going to see from now on. I speak prophetically, so it's a prophetic message that I, I speak. What we're going to see from now on is going to be increasingly based on the presence of God. Our churches are going to be based on the presence of God more than anything else. It's going to be the presence that's going to draw people. And one of the things that God showed me was that, that if, God said to me that like this, he says, if my presence is not there, if I can't draw them, who's going to draw them? So our focus has been, and we've done our best, that we've got the best speakers coming in, you know, and we've done conferences. And that's all, all good and well. And we're building the church the best we can. But there'll come a time when God's presence will be so powerful and so prevailing that people will be drawn, not because of speakers, but because of God's presence. It's going to be so powerful. Amen. And He showed me that that's going to be part of what is going to happen. And His presence is going to draw people, you know, sick people are going to come. And others, and I don't have time to get into this, but all of this goes back to the tabernacle of David. I wish I had time to, to speak on this, but I did speak on it in South Africa last year, or this year. That, that the church is struggling to try and work out how praise and worship works. The church has actually moved away from the concept of biblical praise and worship. We, we have moved and, and please listen to what I'm saying. I'm not criticizing. I was a pastor for twenty years. Pioneer the church, handed it over to my daughter. So I'm a guy that's pastors is big for me. You know, I go to churches with pastors and I speak to pastors all over the world. But, but what we've done is we have, and the devil has subtly done this. He's taken the focus away from, from, from spending time with God to, to focus on teaching in the church. So God is almost like a secondary, if you know what I'm saying. And worship is a, is a secondary thing. It's an issue. It's something that we do before somebody preaches. And we've got to have it. We've got to have preaching. So I'm not saying don't preach. But we've made the, we've made the focus, come to church so that we can feed you and you'll get strong and that's good and well. But, but often our worship is not Jesus-centered. It is just like something we do to fill in the time before somebody gets up and preaches. So if you look at, if you look at the tabernacle of David, what we're trying to do is we're trying to find out how we do worship. And, and we're looking at the wrong places. We're, we're kind of lost looking at musical ability and this and the next thing. And if we can get something great, and I've, I've worked with some of the greatest musicians in the world. But if we can get great music ministry happening on the platform, then everything's really good. It doesn't mean a thing. So we've got to relook at all of that and say, what is it that we've actually got? What is it that we've got to achieve? What are we trying to achieve when we do worship? If you ask the average pastor, they probably won't be able to tell you. They talk about, well, we're trying to get the presence of God. But that's almost a ridiculous statement because God's presence is already there. I mean, we're trying to get something that is ridiculous. We're trying to get God's presence through our music. And God is not attracted to music. He's attracted to worshiping hearts. I need an amen for that, eh? Amen? So, so the better we get musically, we think, you know, well, that's going to be, God's happy. And God says, and, and actually music does not scare the devil either. There is some elements of that that I could speak on. But regarding David and Saul, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not, it's not the music. It is the heart. It is, always comes back to the heart. And that's why I wish I was speaking to a bunch of musicians here and music leaders. Because unless you get the right people on the platform, you're wasting your time. You've got to get worshiping hearts up there, leading worship. Otherwise, and the pastors don't know what's going on. But if they keep thinking, as long as we get good music, then everybody's happy. And the Lord said, I'm not, you know, I'm looking for good hearts. Do you know what I'm saying? So the, so our worship in the end times is going to be centered around God's presence. And we've got to, and this is what we're doing. We're doing as much as we can. We've, we've, we've fallen short so much of what the early church had. If you look at even the early church, the early church, if you look at the church in Antioch, the early church in Antioch, if you look in Acts thirteen, they were ministering to the Lord. And so the whole focus was in spending time with God. They were in the rhythm. I'll speak about this actually in one of the sessions I'm doing probably tomorrow night. Got a tremendous message that God has just given me on, on maintaining the rhythm of life in, in worship. It's a rhythm. And so we got to, we've got to understand how that works. Otherwise, we'll never really move in what God wants. So I will speak about that probably tomorrow. But, but, but so, so we're struggling with this because we don't, we don't actually know what worship's about. We think it's music and God says it's not music. That's an expression of worship, but it's not worship. Worship is a connection with God at a heart level. Amen? And unless we get that heart level connection, then all we're doing is, is music. We're just playing. Amen? So, so the, the church has moved away a lot from the true understanding of what worship really is. As I say, the, 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 if you look at, I'll just go through this really quickly. But if you look at, when they started talking about the restoration of the tabernacle of David, Acts fifteen, the restoration of the tabernacle of David is, is something incredible the church started talking about. So there they are. They have got the Jerusalem council and they're, they're trying to talk about all this kind of stuff, you know, what's going on. But really what God was after was to try and get them to understand biblical worship in the New Testament based on Old Testament worship. So they started talking about a whole lot of stuff, you know, circumcision, all this. That's not what God was, was after. God was trying to show them how to translate, and we still don't have it. How to translate Old Testament worship into New Testament type? How do we make that, that bridge, that transition? The church still hasn't got that. So there's got to be a quickening of understanding of all of that before we, we move into the fullness of that. So, so what they, what was happening there, this is actually incredible. When they talked about, it was James the pastor, the Jerusalem church started talking about that God is going to restore the tabernacle of David which has fallen down. Do you remember that? God is going to restore the tabernacle of David which has fallen down. The tabernacle of David is really about the New Testament church. But then, but then, so, so, so he says, God's going to restore it, but he says it's fallen down. So God's going to restore something that has fallen down. The church right now, and again, I love the church, but the church is in a fallen down state right now. This is not a glorious church. I don't think, you know? And, you know, I don't say that as a, in a judgmental way, but I don't think this is it. I don't think Jesus will come back tomorrow because I don't think the church is in a glorious state yet. But it will be. So there's going to be a quickening of all of that that's going to take place. There's going to be a massive quickening of, of us getting things right. And, and so he, he talks about that, right? He talks about, he didn't talk about the temple of, of the tabernacle of Moses or the temple of Solomon. He talked about the tabernacle of David. There's a lot of reasons for that. So, so what he's saying is, why did he choose the, and I covered this in South Africa? Why did he talk about the tabernacle of David? Because what had happened is Peter had been visited called Neilius. And the Holy Spirit started moving among the people, the Gentiles. So Peter comes back and he says, man, you should see what's happening among the Gentiles. These guys are getting saved and everything's happening. It's incredible. And then Barnabas got involved and I'm just paraphrasing. Barnabas comes back and he said, things are happening. Then he looks for Paul and he takes Paul up to Antioch, the church of Antioch, which is really the first missionary-based church. That was the model, not the, not the church in Jerusalem. The model in Antioch was, was the model. And so what was happening and it, maybe we can look at this quickly because I'm moving fast. Let's have a look at this quickly because it's very, very interesting. Acts thirteen, Acts thirteen. Acts thirteen. So it is very short scripture. But the impact of this scripture, if you understand it, is dramatic. You often find that scripture, right? You'll find a little scripture and then when you actually delve into it, you'll say, oh, wait a minute, that's incredible. So, so here we are. Now let's recap what we've just said. We've said, so the guys in Jerusalem were talking about the restoration of the tabernacle of David, right? That's what we're saying. Not Moses, not Solomon's. But why, why did they choose the tabernacle of David? James had been getting these reports in Jerusalem, the Gentiles, something is happening incredibly among the Gentiles. And at Antioch, at Antioch, if you look at chapter thirteen and verse one, it says, now in the church that was at Antioch, there were certain prophets and teachers. So there was prophets and teachers established, very much like the tabernacle of David. The tabernacle of David was established with, with teaching, but also a prophetic structure. And the reason it had a prophetic structure was to hear what God was saying in real time. Amen? So there's got to be a prophetic voice, there's got to be a prophetic voice basically in every church. The pastor can be the guy that does that, but we've got to hear what God is saying in, in, in real time in local churches. If we're going to get any kind of move of God. So, so there was prophets and teachers up there. And then it mentions, it says, Barnabas, Barnabas Simon, who was called Nige, Lucius of the Cyrene, Manin who led, had been brought up with the heritage, et cetera, et cetera. And it says, in Saul. Then the next thing it says, and this is the key verse that opens up the whole realm of what James was talking about in Acts fifteen. It says, and as they ministered to the Lord and fasted, as they ministered to the Lord and fasted, the Holy Spirit said, now separate to me Barnabas and Saul for the work of the Lord, which I have called them. And they fasted and prayed and hands were laid on them and they sent them away. That was the first time really the missionary church started was there. It was under teachers and prophets. But the word here that's interesting that James, the pastor in Jerusalem picked up on was that word ministering to. In the Greek, that word ministering to, liturgio, it, it means, the, the word means ministering as, as unto the Lord intimately. So what was happening in the early church of Antioch, the focus was not on man. It was on God. And when the focus was on God, then they sent them out. Amen? This is, this is a real key because we're, we're so missions orientated that we send people out in missions from churches. And that's all very good and well. But if the focus is not worship in the local church, you might be wasting your time. Because here's, here's an example here. So they were, now that word ministering is, is the word that, that he picked up on that, although it was in the Greek, it's the same word that was used in, in the tabernacle of David. Exactly the same word which is repeated over and over and over and over again in Chronicles and Kings. When it says, they ministered unto the Lord. It's the same word. When they were in the tabernacle of David and it was, there was just the presence of God. And they were ministering unto the Lord without any restriction. Amen? So James picked up on that and he says, oh my, this is exactly how the, the church has got to be. It's got to be established, first of all, in ministering to God in prayer and especially in worship. It's got to be this intimacy first before we're going to be effectively, effective in sending people up. Amen? David did the same thing, man. When David brought the Ark of the Covenant back to Jerusalem, the guy was dancing and shouting and praising and doing all kinds of things. And so what, what he was doing is he had the presence of God with him. And he says, okay, now we've got to establish the presence of God in our midst. Let's do something. He was thinking this through himself because nobody had ever done this before. Let's get trumpet players. Let's get drummers. Let's get musicians. You can shout. You can dance. You can do whatever you're going. And we'll do it through the streets. But he had first prioritized God's presence. His heart was for God. Therefore, he could do that stuff. And it worked. So, so David's heart was, although it was worship, it was evangelistic as an extension of his worship. Can you see that? Amen? So the church has got to move back to that. So I just thought, I, there's so much stuff here, guys, but let me just say this. So, so in that time I had with the Lord and that forty minute time, he told, he said to me that, that His presence will be prevalent. That's going to be the thing. He showed me some things and, you know, I've preached all over the world. Among a lot of prophets, some significant prophets, and I've shared this word as a test. And I've said, well, if some of these dudes, if they come back to me and they say, we don't get it. We don't believe in that. Then it'll be a bit of a caution for me. But nobody's ever come back to me and said to me, this is not right. And, and so what, what I saw there was this, and I've, I've, I've been frightened sometimes to preach this in the fullness because it sounds crazy. You know, that we're going to prioritize and we're going to be prioritizing the presence of the Lord in prayer and in worship. You're going to find churches that's going to change everything to prioritize His presence. Amen? Can I get an amen? An enthusiastic amen would be great. Too late, guys. So do you know what, so you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? The church is going to change from the church that we know it because this church has fallen down, but God is going to raise it up. I'm telling you, when God raises up the church, it'll be nothing compared to what we've got right now. We're beginning to see glimpses right now of something from Charlie Kirk. And but it was happening before. You know, people are beginning to do twenty-four hour worship and that's part of it. It's not, I don't believe that's quite it because there's, there's, there's a New Testament equivalent to twenty-four hour practical worship. And that's the lifestyle of worship. That's what I've been teaching for, for forty years, the lifestyle of worship. And so because we get tired, the local churches, if you take the average church in America, it's seventy people. Most of them don't have musicians or many musicians. So it's not going to be a musical extravaganza that's going to do it. There will be worship, obviously, but it'll be a mixture of worship and prayer and it'll just be done God's way. You go to the underground church in China. My ministry is getting into the underground church in China in a big way. And I'm telling you, man, those guys don't even have any musicians. And yet their worship is incredible because it's based on the word of God. It's based on presence. Amen? And prayer. So the, the church has got to move back to that. And, and so some of the things that the Lord said to me, he said, churches, churches who don't prioritize my presence will empty overnight. I get this way back in nineteen eighty-four. Churches who don't prioritize my presence will empty overnight. And churches who do prioritize my presence will be filled to overflowing. Amen? So you're starting to see a distinction in the church between churches who do and churches who don't. Amen? All because of God's presence. I was in South Africa years ago and I was invited to speak at a conference. It was a denomination. It was not our denomination. It was a, another big denomination in South Africa. And we, I preached there in the mornings and, and it was incredible. We'd breakthroughs in the mornings. I led some worship. We'd breakthrough. And guys were coming up and saying, oh, we've never done anything like this, been in this denomination for forty years and never had this breakthrough in worship. And then the last day, the moderator was there in the morning. And he was sitting there with his arms folded like this, kind of looking upset. And I knew by his presence, nothing was going to happen. Anyway, I preached a little, little bit of worship and nobody moved. You could not believe the difference between the week, I was there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday he came. You could not believe the difference between those four days and then that day because of His presence. And he sat there and nobody moved. So afterwards, he called me to his office and he said, Tom, he says, you know what? We, we just can't, we can't go with this kind of freedom of worship and, and stuff like that. I said, that's fine, brother. I said, but let me tell you something. All your people did, all your leaders did from all over the country. You were not here, but they did. I may as well tell you because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not frightened to any of these guys. I'm not looking for ministry, man. I need to speak truth. And that's what I spoke to them. And so I let it go. So, you know, gave me a hug kind of thing and I think an offering. But we left, I left there. Two years down the road, two years down the road, I'm ministering somewhere. This young, youngish pastor comes up. Pastor Tommy said, I was at that meeting. I was at those meetings two years ago. He said, you know, today we've lost most of our young men from that time. They left the denomination. He says, I believe we had an opportunity to move in what you were saying, but we, we rejected it. He says, and now our denomination is struggling. Amen? We're not going to have many opportunities left. We've got to move with what the Holy Spirit is saying. But it's got to be more, it's got to be more of a lifestyle of worship. And I won't have time to teach on that. But it's got to be more of a lifestyle of worship. And so that we, 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 the dimension of being intimate with God and in our prayer life is not just when we get to church. It's in the home. And I say this right now, that, that God is not so much working in local churches. Listen carefully what I'm saying. He's working in homes. Can I get an enthusiastic amen? In other words, if God doesn't get it right in the home, the church is weak. Come on, man. I mean, as pastors, we know that, right? The church is only as strong as the, as the homes of the people that make up the church. Amen? So if things are not right at home, things are not right in the church. So we're struggling against trying to build a church and we're building it the wrong way. We've got to get people. It's not, it's not the programs that's going to do it so much. It's the intimacy with God. Guys, how did we get this thing so wrong? When you look at the tabernacle of David, it was all about intimacy. The early church, I just showed you Acts chapter thirteen. It was all about ministering unto the Lord. And then God says, separate for me. The Holy Spirit says, now I can work because you've prioritized what is priority. Your priority is not to go and evangelize the world. You'll get tired. Your priority is to be intimate with me. Then you're equipped to go and evangelize the world. Doesn't work the other way around. Amen? So, so he said to me, he said to me, that the churches, the churches, what will happen in our churches is they'll start to fill with people desperate to find Jesus. I think maybe we're seeing something like that in your country at the moment since the Charlie Kirk thing, you know? But you're going to see that big time. You, you guys are starting to see some things happening in Europe similar along those lines. People, there's going to be a hunger that God puts in people's hearts to find Him. Not necessarily to find church. They've got to find a church at some stage, but to find Him, they're going to be drawn to God Himself. Amen? And when they're in that state, then as pastors we know, if we get people in the right heart state, we can build a church. But if we've got people in the wrong heart state, they're pulling against us and they're trying to destroy the church. So it's best almost to reduce the numbers like the Bible shows us until we get the right people. Come on, man. If you're not with me, then go home because we're going to war, right? That's how, so they reduced the armies. They kept reducing the army. If you've got fear, go back. If your mind is on the, the young woman, if you're married, go back. If your, if your mind is on the house, the vineyard, go back. Because we're ready to fight. So God actually reduces stuff before He builds it. He doesn't build it with numbers. He builds it with hearts that are solid. So, you know, you know, when I speak to pastors, I encourage them because I say, it's hard. I mean, I know, being a pastor for twenty years now, some of you know, I've handed over to my, my daughter and her husband and they're doing a great job. But you hate to lose people, man. But then after a while, it's like, I'm sure glad they went. When you understand the principle, how God builds, the principle, God does everything opposite to the way we think He should do it. Everything. Amen? Everything. So we think the more people we get, this is great. God says, not necessarily. You may be having a lot of people in there, a lot of people who are actually detracting from the spiritual foundations that God is trying to build. Amen? So we're trying to build with people and God's trying to build with hearts. It's crazy. So we've got to renew your mind. So John the Baptist was saying, he's saying repent for the kingdom of God is at hand. He was basically saying, guys, if you want to, if you want to embrace the kingdom, what you've got to do is you've got to change your way of thinking. Stop thinking the way you've always thought because this is a new day. So we've got to start thinking different. We've got to start thinking totally supernatural that in an instant, God is going to do it. We just got to hold the ground, do our best, be faithful, press into the Holy Spirit, press into God like never before, like never before. This generation has got to press in like never before. Hallelujah. Stop looking for formulas, but look for God. And He showed me in these times. And he showed me in these times that, that the healing anointing, I mean, the healing anointing was very strong in David's tabernacle. Most pastors have no idea what you're talking about when you say that. There, there was a prophet, a prophet who had an incredible healing anointing called Asaph. His name means healing. The guy was in the tabernacle. Amen. I mean, it was like, we've got a prophet in, in the house and this guy's a healer. He hears from God when he heal. He, he, he can, he can write music to heal. Amen. So what's going to happen is the presence of the Lord entered. Either I heard from God forty years ago or I'm crazy. You can take what you want, but I'm not going to stop, stop preaching this message until it manifests. Or God takes me away. That's it. But the, the Lord said to me, he said, what's going to happen is that, that his presence will be so attractive for sick people and people looking for help, you will not be able to get believers into the church. There will hardly be any room for believers because of the unbelievers will be trying to get in. I'm giving you a picture. There's not the church now, but it's on its way. It's imminent. Can you see that? Can you imagine that? Can you picture that? I've seen that in my mind. That they, they'll be standing outside, they'll be, they'll be worshiping outside and so excited that they can't get into church. Because the people in the building will be people who are sick and needy and who need a word from God, a breakthrough from God. So God's going to raise up prophets and apostles to establish this stuff in a, in an incredible way. I mean, real apostles and real prophets. Amen. But the, but the actual people will be standing outside praising and worshiping and praying outside. While people inside will be getting raised from the dead. Give me an amen. Come on. I mean, we read a bit of this stuff and we think, this is incredible, man. Look what God did in the Bible, you know? So is that not for us? You know, is this just a, it's just a dream? And then we just all got to go to heaven and say, well, praise the Lord. I mean, come on, man. I don't think we're just, I don't think we're going to go to heaven until we start to see a measure of this at least. Otherwise, the glorious church is like, okay, where was the glorious church, Lord? We, we read so much about all these miracles and signs and wonders and, and stuff, but it didn't happen. It didn't happen. Here we are in heaven and I feel almost a little bit disappointed. Wouldn't you? I would. So people will be drawn, saved and unsaved. So, you know, the church has got to start to prepare for the influx of souls. We're going to see a remarkable, that's one of the preparations. So the church is in a preparation stage right now for the influx of souls that's coming in, so that we can, we can make them strong. So it's like John the Baptist was a, he was preparing for what is coming. So God will always prepare for what's coming. There's got to be a word, there's got, there's got to be a message to prepare for what is coming. That's where the prophets come in. And they, they start to actually, you know, this whole thing, and, and pastor David and I have spoken about this. It's more than just speaking personal words to people. It's, it's going to go beyond that. A great friend of mine was a guy called Kim Clement. We were great friends. We ministered together. We traveled together. And, and we talked about this. And he says, yeah, he says, you know, when he started, it was like the lowest level was personal prophecy. And then God started taking them up different levels. Amen. So that you start to speak over regions and nations. Amen? You start to lay that foundation. So you're moving in bigger circles. Hallelujah. Geographical areas will be impacted by words from true prophets and apostles and pastors. Impacted, impacted, geographical areas will be totally impacted. Amen? So. Is there any questions? Any questions? No. No questions? Okay. I, what I've got is a, is a, I do coaching, worship coaching now. And it's once a month. And I'm just going to, I'm going to touch on some things that, you know, we, we've, we've got guys from all over the world now. We've, we've got a guy from Belgium and on the course as well. So I do it once a month and then I, I coach them on stuff and it's different time zones. But, but if you're on that coaching, then you can always access whatever's there. It's, it's all, it's all in video and we give them notes. But here's some of the things that came up. Here's some of the things that came up. These are very interesting questions that came up from some, some significant worship leaders across the globe. So I let them ask questions because sometimes you can get really great answers that things you weren't thinking about. Here's one. So the question came up, Pastor Tom, why did, was Lucifer a worship leader? I'm going to just speak as if you're worship guys, okay? Was Lucifer a worship leader? I said, yeah, he actually was. He led the worship in heaven. And so when you look at Lucifer as a worship, instrumentation was built into him. So it was a part of him, right? And God anointed him. So although God created him as a perfect angel, but with choice, right? But with choice, God still had to anoint him for the purpose of leading worship. Isn't that interesting? He still had to anoint him. The Bible clearly talks about that. He was anointed for that. So, so, so this led us in a path of incredible discovery as we started asking questions, you know, let them post questions. So I asked a question. I says, okay. Here's a question we must answer so that we understand why worship is worship. Let's get it down to fundamentals. Why did God get Lucifer to lead worship in heaven? It's a great question. Isn't that a great question? Why did God even do that? Now, we know God's a musical God, but why did God get Lucifer to lead worship in heaven? The reason was to give the angels a choice if they would worship God or not. This is the whole foundation of worship, if you look at it. He gave the angels a choice. He led the worship and he gave the angels a choice. Are you going to worship? I just wrote these down in pencil, is what we're talking. So all creation worships God. We know that. Creation has no choice. Creation responds to God in worship, everything. The whole universe is vibrating. I'll talk about that maybe tomorrow and how that affects us. But the whole universe vibrates basically with praise. So the whole universe is, is an instrument responding to God who created it. It's incredible, man. Amen? But they have, they have no choice. Only you and I have a choice. And so what worship is then, worship then is a choice that we are given to express how much we love God. Amen? Now, you don't have to. Some people might, you know, hide behind that silly argument, well, I'm not musical. It's got nothing to do with whether you can sing or whether you can't. It's a choice. It's a measure. And God measures that. So God looks at every individual and says, how much does this person actually love me? Because every time worship comes up in the local church, if we could teach this to our people, every time worship comes up, it's a choice. Are you going to love me or you're not going to love me? How much do you love me? Amen? So, so the battle is, I'm going to reach you from notes I, I wrote down here. The, the, the big battle is for worshippers. The battle is for worshippers. It's a battle of thrones. Who's on your throne of worship? Who do you enthroned with your worship? Amen. God is always on the throne. But what happens when we worship? We enthroned God in our lives. So he becomes bigger than anything that's happening in our lives. Amen? So the church then, if you, if you look at the local church, I think this is a great analogy. The, the local church is like a field or you could say a battlefield. The local church is like a battlefield. Your field, think in terms of farming for a minute here. Your field, the church, will never produce unless you sow seeds of worship into it. Should maybe write that down. Your church is like a field, like a battlefield. Your field will never produce unless you sow seeds of worship into it. Amen? So there's no productivity actually happening in a local church according to what God wants, unless the priority of worship is given first, unless seeds of worship have been sown into that church. Cain was a farmer. He brought unacceptable worship to God. His field was the, the fruit of the ground he brought from, to, to worship. And God threw Cain out of his field. If you look at all this in Genesis four, he threw him out of his field. He threw him out of his place of productivity because his worship was not right. Amen? I'll say that again. He threw him out of his field. He, God threw him out of his place of productivity because his worship was not acceptable to God. So can you see something here? That the productivity of any local church is associated with the worship of that church? Amen? And it says there, he became unproductive. This is on Genesis, chapter four. And, but it says there, it's, it's a sad story because it says, he roamed endlessly. He roamed endlessly. So your productivity, your productivity as an individual, everything about your life is rooted in, in based on, on the acceptable worship, everything in your life. Everything in your life, everything in your local church is rooted and founded in that as well. But, but why does God raise up a church? Here's a great question. Why would God raise up a local church here? What is God's plan here? So, so our, our thinking is to get people saved here. That's a massive part of it. And salvation is important, but that's not the main, the main part of it is to adore him. And from that, like David says, I'm going, we're going to get you back to Jerusalem, God. And we're going to adore you. But, but part of that is going to be dancing so everybody can see it, right? So, so we've got to establish it with the right, for the right reason. We're establishing this church basically to adore you. One thing I have desired and that will I seek, that it may, that I may dwell in the house of the Lord all the days of my life, to behold the beauty of the Lord and to inquire in his temple. The, the word beauty there is to gaze at. David says, I'm establishing this tabernacle to gaze at you. And then we can look at everything else. We've turned the thing the wrong way wrong. So we're doing everything else. And oh, by the way, we'll do worship for twenty minutes. And I understand that, being a pastor, I understand that. I'm not saying here what you've got to worship for twenty-four hours. I'm not saying that. I'm saying you've got to develop it as a lifestyle so that you bring the standard of worship as, as a water level. You bring the whole thing up. Amen. And that's why we've developed these courses. So your productivity is linked to that. It's associated with your worship. It's got to be acceptable. God is, is, is restoring acceptable worship. So worship lifestyle reflects basically that God is your, is your first choice. And I was speaking, we were talking about, you know, how worship is worship leaders. What actually happens? And I said, you know, one of the questions come up is, you know, what, what actually goes on when you lead worship? I said, one of the things that is, is primary importance is that you give hope. When you worship and it's genuine worship, you give hope to others of the reality that God exists. Amen? You give hope to people. It's like, wow. See, the night I get saved, that's how, exactly how I get saved. Little assemblies of God church in Johannesburg. Tiny little church. It was the worship. When I saw them worshiping, the church was a bit twenty people. But when I saw the people worshiping, I was sitting and I knew that something was wrong with me. It was the worship. That's how I get drawn to this whole thing. It was the worship. And I was a science guy. So I'm, I'm, I argue with Christians all the time from a science point of view. Barbara was an Anglican and we were not interested in church. We, we almost get hoodwinked, not hoodwinked, but coerced to come to church. And I said, we'll go because of the music. Said, there's, there's a great musician in the church tonight. He's a great singer. He was a rock singer in South Africa. One of South Africa's best. I says, I know that guy. He's crazy. He says, now you get saved. He's in the church. David Nellis. And so, so I, I go along and one of the, the top jazz penis in South Africa was playing. And, and during the worship, I'm sitting there. Cause I said to them, we'll leave after the music. When the music is finished, Barbara and I are gone. But during the worship, I get drawn to God. I knew my life was not right. Then the preacher got up and he preached a message and I heard the gospel really for the first time. And when he says, anybody would like to give their, their life to Jesus, put your hand up. I put my hand straight up. I looked at Barbara and you're meeting her tonight. She'll be here this weekend. She put her hand straight up. We get saved. It was the worship. But it was the genuineness of the worship. It was like, whoa, these people actually believe that he lives. Otherwise they couldn't, because I knew singing. They couldn't do that the way they just did that. It was real. It was authentic. It was genuine. It was like, whoa, this is not performance. These people, I can see it. And that's what drew, drew me. So it gives hope. If we don't worship, no one would ever know that God exists. Cause you cannot effectively evangelize unless it's from a worshiping heart. You can tell people about Jesus, but it might not work. Then we make it work and we have testimonies that actually don't exist. Sometimes you don't have to say too much to people. Because they pick it up, they pick up the presence of the Lord in your life. So you don't have to gab yourself. You don't have to, you know, do this, say this and say that and say that to people all the time. You don't have to do that. No. So what worship does is it, it gives, it gives unbelievers hope, but it also encourages believers for fresh hope. Because there's a spirit of revelation always released into worship. There's a spirit of revelation. Always. Moses come down, Abraham come down the mountain, two young men says, what happened up there? Phew, I'm paraphrasing. He said, yeah, I can't believe it, you know? We met God up there. God pitched up up there. Two young men, next generation down. So, so what happened? So, so, so the revelation Abraham said we got, we discovered who God was. And nobody has ever known who he was until that place of worship. He's Jehovah Jireh. So in the place of worship is the place of revelation. In the place of worship is the place of provision. Somebody help me here. Amen? So worship is not just an act. It's a place where you encounter God as your provider. Amen? So. Worship ministry, this is one of the things that came up, this question and answer thing. Worship ministry highlights his presence amongst us. You remind a congregation that God is with us in real time. This is really important, that God is with us in real time. If we can get that concept to people, that when you're in worship, worship actually transforms you, takes you to another dimension. Amen? The dimension that we run when we talk is a different dimension. But worship trans, transforms you, it takes you to another place. And in that place, God is very keen to talk to you and to open up mysteries and to do all kinds of, open up dark things upon the heart, right? Bible talks about that kind of stuff. So that's what worship does. And I don't think we've got time to get into this whole Samist thing because that would take forever. But is there any questions? Please, please ask me questions. If you've got any questions. Got a couple of more things I want to talk about here. But is there any questions, please? Anything? Yeah. Uh, there's a microphone there, bro.
Hello?
There you go.
As you were talking, I looked up the meaning of the word liturgio.
Yeah.
And one of the meaning is to serve the state at one's own cost.
That's right.
Would you speak into that?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that, that's one of the meanings of, of the word. Um, to serve the state at one's own cost. So, so this, this brings in the whole realm of, and it's, it's all linked to this whole realm of humility. That, that we've got to get away from that we're doing this for money. Uh, you know, the, the, this is a big, this is a big deal. It brings a lot of things up here. But, um, the, 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 a lot of the ministry right now, the, the focus is on finances. And, uh, and a lot of the, the, the whole, the whole subject of, of praise, not worship, but the subject of praise. The foundation for that is all sacrificial, the sacrifice of praise. Amen? So, so there's got to be that, um, that sacrificial spirit there. Uh, you know, even building church, you know, when we started building the church in, in Australia, geez, it was difficult. It was so difficult. I couldn't, I would go and speak at massive conferences all over the world. I'd come back to my church of 20 people. I could not build a church past 20 people in two years. We spent our life savings from America, because I lived here for eight years. Uh, when, so I went to Australia. And we could not build a church past 20 people. And I would, I would be preaching to thousands. I'd come back. And when I went to South Africa, people would say, "Tom, you're crazy. What, what are you doing there? People know you here. What are you doing there?" And I went through that process and I'm thinking, "How does this stuff work? What am I doing?" And I felt that was part of the, the, the thing that God had given me to carry, which is worship. Is that in that, to birth that, there has got to be the sacrifice. It's a, we're, we're birthing something, right? At one's own cost. It's a great definition, that. That, that, that worship is a cost. It's a costly thing. It, it costs, it costs, it costs, it costs the renewing of the mind. It costs you doing things not the way man doesn't. So the, the foundation, the prayer, actual praise is, 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 is this whole area of, of sacrifice. You know, when, 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 when you think about musicians, musicians usually come in to a church and they'll play because they've already accomplished something. They can play keyboards. They can play piano. They can play guitar. They can sing. And so, and so their, their commitment is really shallow in a sense because they're just doing what they've already known what to do. When, when we, I was at Raymond, the music director, we had an incredible guitarist. He was one of the best in the country. He's a young guy, single. And the Lord said to me, "Something's not right with him." So I, 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 yeah, I said to him, "Is something wrong with you?" He said, "No, everything's right." I said, "No." "I know something's wrong." He said, "No, it's not." "Blessed Tom, everything's good." I took him for a few more months and the Lord spoke to me. I says, "God, I don't know what it is about him." The Lord said to me, "He comes unprepared. There's no sacrifice in his life to play his guitar because he's so good. He doesn't have to practice." And he was that good. So I called him aside and I said to him, "Bro, I think I know why I'm troubled by, by you. And I love you dearly. But the Lord has shown me that you don't really prepare for Sunday. You get up there, you're so good. You get the accolades of the people. What a great guitarist. And you walk away and God's not in the process." God is not in the process of preparation. Because, because the act is a big thing that we look at, the final result is a big thing that we look at. But what's important to God is not the final result, but the process that we're prepared to go through to get that result. So the process is more important than the product? Amen? We're always looking at the product. So that's why if we can, if we can build a church by natural means and relax and think, "This is great. We're in trouble." Because you haven't gone through the process. Remember, I think, I don't know if I spoke here, John the Baptist, guy was 30 years in the desert for six months of ministry. 30 years in the desert for six months of ministry. And God's economy is not the same as man's economy. God did not think it was wrong for him to spend six months of his life hidden, obscure. Because God was, was preparing him. And he was preparing himself for six months where he could be used to introduce the Christ. God needed someone who could introduce the Christ. But someone who's prepared to not be at the big conferences and speaking. Amen? And then he came and he went as quick as he came. No miracles, no signs, no wonders. Jesus says, "Never been anybody quite like him." Why? There's never been anybody like this guy, Jesus. I'm paraphrasing. Never been, you know, a man born of women like this guy. Why did Jesus say that? No miracles, no, no signs, no wonders, nothing. Why? Because he was in, he was in his right timing. He had paid the price to speak a few words. And the words that he spoke was not revelation. It was Old Testament stuff from Isaiah, Jeremiah, one of, and Nehemiah, one of those Old Testament books. So he basically said, "Prepare ye the way of the Lord. I'm here to prepare the way of the Lord. Repent for the kingdom of God is at hand." Those guys had heard that message. So why did they go to the, the desert to hear a man that they'd heard a message from before? Because his words carried weight. Words only carry weight, guys, listen. Words only carry weight when the person who's releasing those words have spent the sacrificial time with God, then the words become weighty. Amen? I mean, I was talking to Rodney Harbron about this. We were talking about this thing. And, and, and we're talking about the weight of words and, and I said to him, "Wow." I said, "You know, there's more to this than meets the eye. There is, there is weight. There is substance behind words. We know that, right?" I've written this book, by the way. The Sound of Heaven, it's all about words and stuff and, and the sounds that God wants us to, to release. But, but here's, here's the point. You and I, we can never rise above the level ever of the words that we speak. We can never rise above the sound that we make. And the sound that we make is not necessarily spoken. The sound that, the frequency that you carry, I'm gonna speak about this in one of the sessions. The frequency that you carry, you can, which is the makeup of everything that you are, because it comes from a heart level. Amen? You can never rise above that, ever. You're stuck at that level. So John the Baptist, he had heard from God, right? And he says, "I'm content to be in the desert. I'll just dress the way I dress. I'll just eat the way I eat. It's not a big deal." He wasn't looking for any ministry. But when the time was right, he was the, he was the one that it all came together, the Holy Spirit, the Father speaking, boom, this is him. And then he went into obscurity. Amen? So you're gonna find pastors like that as well, who will go through times where it seems like it's obscurity. But God will give them something that will be so profound, and then maybe they'll just, once they've released that, maybe they'll just go. But it's all got to do with timing. Any questions? Yes, sister?
Actually, I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
We had, um, Thursday prophetic class and we were determining what our garments were.
What's your?
Garments.
Okay.
Spiritual garments.
Yeah.
And the Lord told me what they were, but I sort of felt like Ezekiel asking God, "You, God, you know, you know," when he says, "Can these bones live?" And I said, "Well, Lord, you know." So, but as you're speaking, I felt like he had given me the bones. But as you're speaking, he's fleshing them out for me. You know, like you're talking about praise. Well, that was one of my weapons, my garments. And he said, "But the only thing is, you have your praise." You know how you have a, like a lady's wearing, in some places she's chilly, and she takes a sweater and throws it over her shoulders?
Yeah.
Well, he said, "That's how you have your praise." He said, "But I want you to put it on. I want you to put your arms in it and wear it."
Yeah.
That's the first one. The next one was, you touched on humility. And the other one was submission. So he's, he's, you know, as you're speaking, you're feeling, you're fleshing it out for me. And I thank you.
Thank you. Praise the Lord, yeah. Yeah. All right, how we doing for time? It's up past three. Okay, because there's Yeah. And then I think, I think I've got one book here. I've only had a couple of these books. I taught, when, when Kim Clement died, I, um, I wrote this book basically on healing and worship. There's incredible connection between the subject of healing and worship. I've only got a couple of these books here, but I've got a lot of these. Sound of Heaven, and then there's one there where I met my mother in five hours, my biological mother. Yep.
I just wanted to say, um, maybe you can touch on this a little bit. Um, so what, you know, I'm hearing, just trying to read and listen in between everything. So, am I wrong for thinking that there is a lot of worship that is seeded from the posture of the heart versus a huge cost, a, a huge culture that engages in worship, but without realizing it's a worship, a soul worship versus a spirit worship?
Exactly.
What can you talk about?
No, e- exactly, exactly that. That's, that's been the deception of the enemy. And the, 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 if you look, getting back to the, the Lucifer, that's exactly what it was. It was a solish worship, but one third of the angels were deceived by it. So, so, so masses can be deceived by that. It wasn't pure worship. Started off pure. But they were, they were, they were deceived, so they followed worship that was, was not acceptable to God. Yeah. Yeah.
I think this kind of goes along with what he just asked, but emotionally, because music does affect people differently. Different emotions and all. So I guess my question would be, should we just follow our emotions? Or just keep our eyes on the Lord and do it as unto the Lord instead of?
Okay. Let me, let me, thank you for the question. The greatest emotion that God carries is love. Just think about that for a minute. God is an emotional God because he's a loving God. Love is, is the strongest emotion that anybody can have. So, so the purity of worship then will definitely stir the emotions. But it's got to come from purity. So purity stirs the emotion. But so does, so does solish stuff. Amen? But that's not, that's not godly emotion. That is, you know, ungodly emotion. You can go to a rock concert and get emotional because they scream and shout and stuff like that. So their emotions are, are wrong directed. It's not pure emotion. It's not God-based love. It is love for the music, love for the singer, the rock singer, whatever it is. It's distortion. So it's good for us to feel emotional and to release emotion when we worship. But it's got to be based on love. It can be, it can be the fruit of the spirit, but the strongest one is love. So God is an emotional God.
So, um, this is so clear that this thing starts for love for Jesus, for love for God.
Yeah.
That worship starts there. But if we look around us, look at my, in my life, we don't see the results of worship in the way we want to see. And I thought maybe we have to, we can see in the Bible that David commanded his soul to praise God. It's a combination of, see, you are human, you're from flesh and blood, but you need the love, the supernatural love and, and, and
Yeah.
the grace of the Holy Spirit to move into you, to worship God. And I know the combination to command your soul and to more, uh, in the Holy Spirit, to more in the love of God.
It's, it's a combination of things. If, if, there, there are times when we don't feel that God is there, right? And so it's, it's a, it's a readjustment. It's like a fine tuning. If you're a motor car, you fine tune, it goes off a little bit, you fine tune it, right? So it's a fine tuning. There'll be these challenging times when we don't feel that God is in anything that we're doing. But that's the time that you've got to praise the Lord, even if you don't feel any emotional about it. Because that gets back to the question our brother had earlier. I think he's gone. But, um, the sacrifice. So, so it's a consistency. I'm gonna praise God irrespective of how I feel. Sometimes I'll feel really good about it, so the emotions can be stirred. But sometimes I'm doing it just purely because he's God. And God loves it both ways. And God, God looks at everything and says, "Okay, you know, do you still love me when it doesn't look like things are going well? Is it positive when things are going good?" Yeah. Okay, it's time. So God bless you guys. Thanks for coming. And we'll see you tonight, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Jesus. Amen? What we have here this afternoon is, I would say, probably the most valuable insight of somebody that understands worship. You know, we need to understand this. Apostle Tom's not looking for ministry. This man travels around the world and has seen thousands and thousands of people graduated, um, through their schools. And we're church, I've been in a church in, in California where Tom taught. He was one of the, the senior leaders there. And the church went from 500 to 1500 because of worship. Because of worship, not because of the guest speakers or the guy that was the senior leader or because of the preaching. It was because of worship. Worship is a key that brings us into spiritual realms. And the realm that God wants the church to walk in right now is a far more mature realm than what we've seen. So I just wanted to add that because I know Tom, I've known Tom for 37 years. And I understand what he carries. And I would, I would love to see 200,000 Tom Ingleses being released on the earth. Amen, come on. But I want to say this, tomorrow afternoon, I have a session. I think my session's at 11:00. I know we have Apostle Kai in the morning. I'm gonna give my session to Apostle Tom. Because I really feel what he has to say is far more important than what I have to say. Amen? You guys have all heard me 150 times. I'm preaching tonight. I'm preaching on Sunday morning. But I want to give my session tomorrow morning. So come with an expectation because I really feel it's important. Amen? Are we just gonna shut down Apostle Kai, Apostle Kai?